I would have to take that with my supervisor.
So what, so what would a city do if it hasn't been done and for needs to be? Like, what are the recommendations you will give us for us to get this done? I guess I'm missing.
Normally, we're going in doing a code compliance. It's on a empty structure.
Okay, so we, so you're saying that people are living there, it hasn't been done. Do we just leave it alone? You're saying, so you're saying as our representative for the city of Prairie View, we can leave this alone?
On these ones on the outside, no, we can take a look at those. On any, I'd have to go through each and every inspection report to see if there was something actually inside a unit that they needed re-inspections on. Now, if we had, uh, electrical outlets that were wired wrong, that would be something definitely need to take a look at. Um, I'm not aware, without going back through every one of these, if there were any actual life safety issues that needed to be addressed, other than this one where Chris noted the tread height.
So how would that, so what do we need, so I guess what do we need to do in this meeting? As far as, do we need to make a request to bear veritas? Uh, one, that on the twelve buildings that we need to get an engineering letter and RMP, signed by the mayor, or sent from our city attorney to the develop? Like, what is your recommendation for us to move to get the letter, the engineering letter and RMP letter? What, what's your recommendation?
Well, the mayor can reach back out to the contractor. Uh, I can also reach it back out to the contractor, but it would be more, it would, uh, I think they would act more with it coming from the mayor. I sent it out the last time, and I copied the mayor, and I did a spreadsheet on it.
You copied it?
Mm-hmm.
When, what time, when was this?
About a year ago, I think.
Okay.
I'd have to go back to my records.
Okay.
So much, and I did a spreadsheet outlining everything.
Mr. Mayor, are you familiar with this? So we can, uh, not the process, so if we had to say that there was ten buildings, we could easily just write a letter to those ten, to the owner about those ten buildings? Can you, or is that something we need to determine?
About ten buildings that the attorney says they've got things that need to be done? Sure.
Yeah, well, I know there were twelve of them that we needed the RMP and the foundation letter.
Twelve, okay.
There are twelve of them, the RMP, uh, RMP and the foundation. Now, the framing are gonna be all of them.
Okay.
Are all of the le- letters that we received so far, because they had their engineer of record. The developer had their engineer do all the framing inspections.
And this for twel- for those twelve or for all?
All of them.
All. So, again, okay, right, so what, what needs to happen? Do we need the attorney to send a letter to Panther Hill, asking for the engineering, the area, engineering letter and RMP on those twelve buildings? And then, do we need to have the attorney send, uh, a letter? So, well, no, maybe not the attorney, we wanna do, we wanna be good neighbors. If we can get the mayor to do it, uh, maybe give him a timeframe of what? Fifteen days to get us this, this stuff back? Is that, is that some of the things that we'll? So, again, we wanna be good neighbors, we're trying to just get this done. We just want the, the information.
Well, the contractor is also, well, I don't say the contractor, not Ms. Engie, Well has reached out to me a couple of times. The site engineer, not understanding, I've gone over it time and time again, that the language is not correct. Um, and since he's taken over the project, I'm not quite sure, I still think it needs to go back to Ms. Engie. Mayor, you think that too? Back to Ms. Engie?
I'll check with both, I'll see what you need once I know we've got a list up.
Yeah, well, I'll go back and, uh, find that spreadsheet again and, uh, resend it to you. I haven't received anything since, I don't think I've received anything since I did that spreadsheet. I'll go back through the packets, 'cause I know they, they resumated.
I had some engineer letters, but I don't know if they were the before or after.
Yeah, well, I know they resumated them again, but they were exact same language.
So, so, again, uh, is this, so, so, thank you, thank you for, for kinda, uh, give us the information. Paramount, is that through you or is that through USW?
That's through USW.
It's not me, 'cause I don't know what you're talking about.
Paramount, USW, okay, cool, okay. So, so, thank you, um, that's all the questions I had, I don't know if council members. So.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me, uh, clarify one thing, uh, Panther Hills was set up in our system, so the plans went to, got FedEx to us and were received in our Plano office November the twenty-eighth of twenty seventeen.
Correct.
You were asking about that date earlier.
November twenty seventeen.
Yeah, so, did, uh, the other, I guess we didn't, um, was there anything on gates? The gates of Prairie View town?
No, the gates is still pending civil. We, uh, the gates, uh, were reviewed and approved by Veritas July the twenty-ninth of nineteen.
So, you said it's still pending civil?
Civil, like they were, they were telling you, the, the civil, they got it with civil review and made their comments, like the TCEQ, the pipe size and different things like that, there were three comments they had on that. So, the gates has not started anything yet, because they're still pending trying to pass their civil review.
So, that's the one that's not done yet, so what about Campus Edge? But that's, the gates, so they haven't started anything due to the fact that they haven't passed their civil review, but?
Correct.
Panther Hill was allowed to build.
We don't know that, because the city engineer at the time sent notes, so you don't know whether they passed or not, because everybody's been in touch with them and all he sent was a short note on a re-review. We don't have the original review, we don't have the original plans, so you can't say what they did or didn't do. We do know they were systematically submitted.
But we can say they stopped doing it without us knowing.
Well, we knew.
Well, I'm saying without us knowing, whether or not they passed it or not, which is, this is that.
Us who?
The city.
You weren't, you weren't around the city.
Right, so you knew.
Yes, I knew, I was there almost every day, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. But check with me on that one with all passes and fails, I'm, I'm curious to see what Chris has in mind if he needs a letter, so we can update that on.
Art, that, could you provide to us the ones, the buildings that need re-things, like the ones that needed re-inspections? We should have a list, right, or is that in the system? How do you get a list of re-inspections? Because now, 'cause usually the ones that needed re-inspections are the ones that are occupied, people living in them, and they don't?
They'd have to go back in and pull individual reports, uh.
So what do we need to do to get?
And if, and if they're not expired. If they're expired and the system are closed, I'll have to see if the TMS, if it's just closed in there, we should be able to open them up. Uh, there shouldn't be any of them expired, but I'll have to, I'll have to look into that.
So, our request to BV should be, do we need to get, uh, so, so we need to outline specifically what we need? We need a list of all properties that had, uh, inside the units had issues, or, so we can?
That's also a list that, that's also a list Myra can pull.
Okay, but we don't know the language, so do we say, do you know what, what do we need to ask for? I guess I'm trying to just get us to what we need to ask for, and then kinda just move us through the process. Is that something I could talk to people I want about?
Uh, I'm trying to think through the process, you might need, let me, let me think up a little bit, but I think Myra can pull all that stuff from the TMS system.
Okay.
But she'll have to go into each project individually and, and open the reports and see what's still outstanding, and they may be in this already.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bynum, did you need to speak?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Donovan. Good afternoon, Mr. Donovan. Have you introduced yourself for the folks who have met you?
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, residents of Prairie View, good afternoon, Mayor Allen and council members. My name is Jonathan King, I'm with, uh, USW Water. Um, I haven't been on the project long, but, uh, I'm glad to be here, glad to meet y'all.
And let them know what you do for the city.
Uh, right now, we do, uh, we mainly work with utilities, the water lines and sewer lines and things of that nature.
And did you have a report you wanted to mention?
Yes, sir, uh, do y'all have copies or?
This, this was, uh, for requirements, not recommendation from Mr. Boswick from the last one, right?
Yes.
So, so we don't, so we should have?
So, the issue, I think you got two meetings ago?
Yeah, we got those two.
From Mr. Boswick?
Yeah.
And then you got the report at the last meeting and you got the update for today.
So, so, so on this sheet that we have is an additional against some costs or as far as recommendations? I think that's attached to the bottom, so we have that one page here, put this, thank you.
Got it.
So, in our, I think you're at the meeting where, where, uh, Mr. Boswick did a preliminary on the draft report that we received, which is dated September twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. In the draft report, as he went through, um, can you go, I, I think he talked about some other projects, but we're only speaking on, um, Panther Hill, Campus Edge and the gates?
Yes, sir.
Can you, uh?
Did I correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, um, on September thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, I wasn't on the project yet, but, uh, Mr. Boswick went out and he, uh, surveyed the site, and, uh, these are his findings. On the gates of Prairie View, we haven't received anything from them.
So we don't have anything on them, the gates of Prairie View.
Yeah, they haven't started doing anything yet.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, in, um, I was gonna split one.
Panther Hill Apartments, uh, no backflow was, uh, was not there on the water system at the point of connection. Due to the private lift station on site, um, it's required. Also, the same thing with Campus Edge Apartments. No backflow prevention assembly was found on the water system at the point of connection. Due to the private lift station on the property, a reduced pressure principle backflow prevention assembly is required.
Quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Backflow, in talking with Mr. Boswick, and I think even back when Panther Hill was being cleared out and built?
Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding, is this the backflow that's in the city easement?
Yes, yes.
Not on the private property?
Wait. It's on the private property, yes.
No, the lift station's on the private property, I'm speaking of the backflow.
I'm sorry.
Where near the connection, 'cause the connection's not on private property, it's on city easement.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what Mr. Boswick and I discussed when he shared this with us and we talked about it, I wasn't clear from his presentation, but what came out was, this is on the city easement, and we weren't sure, uh, we were gonna fix it, we need to get it fixed.
Yes, sir.
But we weren't sure at that time, because the city was involved in the connection, 'cause you can't connect to the city lines, the city has to do that. So, we weren't sure if the city, uh, Public Works had neglected to do this, or if it was something that Panther Hill had done, but, again, we know it needs correcting.
Yes, sir.
So, your recommendation, what it would cost to do, to get it done?
No, no, that's, that's different.
No, what I'm talking about is not impact. So, so we wanna take a look at that, because it's on the city easement, and we were involved in both instances in making the water sewer connections to the private property.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just wanna know what it takes to correct it, because, uh, we may be involved, it needs to be done per, per TCEQ, but not necessarily something the developer did or didn't do.
Yes.
Because the connections are ours.
Yes, sir.
And just for edification for everybody in the room, uh, what is the backflow and what implications of, of not having backflow?
A backflow is a device that has the capabilities of preventing, uh, contamination from getting back into the, the water source. It's, uh, it's actually really needed, I mean, to not have a backflow device on there, that's a, a help, that's a safety.
Can we get it done tomorrow?
Sure, if, if the city, if the city wants a backflow.
Get it done.
But that's not our, so, so.
It's near our connection, so it's our responsibility, and it's my job to make sure it happens, so. So, let's take care of it, because it's a TCEQ violation, we have no, it's not an option.
You wanna spend city money on a private development, right? So, 'cause you're, 'cause they're your friends, but, Mr. Mayor, listen, listen. The last time we had the report.
You need some friends.
The last time we had the report, Mr. Boswick stood right here and told you and gave us this preliminary report that's in front of us. In the report, you talked them down, saying it wasn't required, he brought you an updated report, showed you the TCEQ line, showed you where you could find it, and the health concerns that it addressed. Now, you're saying, let's go pay for it. We, the question that, again, if it's, Mr. Boswick, who works for USW, who is the contractor for the city, wouldn't be bringing it to our attention if it's something, if, if it's something that we needed to fix or pay for, he would've said, this is what y'all need to pay for or fix. He's saying Panther Hill, this is something that needs to be addressed with their development. My question, and, and we're supposed to get some recommendations, he says you have some recommendations for us. And so, when we get through the report, we'll find out how much it costs to do this, and then making sure who's the responsible party. He also talks about if the contractor says, well, was it required or wasn't required, it's also something of cost that should be associated with, with the developer, which is Panther Hill. Now, we may not, we may, we may not have to go to Panther Hill for the money. That's a conversation, but, Mr. Mayor, we're just starting from the beginning, and you're already giving excuses. We're saying, we're saying in the report I do is identify, that this needed to be put in for health and safety issue, right? So, we all agree that needs to be addressed, and in his, once he's done, he's gonna give recommendations on the steps moving forward.
Please, whatever.
Okay, the backflow device, uh, the cost is between roughly two fifty to five hundred dollars, depending on, you know, what device you want. The city can purchase the device, or it can get the contractor.
How close is it to the city connection in the easement?
I'm not sure, I would have to put my eyes on that.
Because one of the things that did not come out when Mr. Boswick was here was, was this on public property on city easement? That came out in the conversation me and him had just a few days ago. Because he mentioned it was needed, I agree with you, he mentioned it was needed. He didn't say where it was at. What you don't understand is if it's on private property, they pay for it. If it's on the city easement, we often pay for it. So, until you understand that, you don't know how and what is supposed to be done.
Are you talking to me, Mr. Mayor?
Ah, ah, certainly.
Okay, so I could respond then. It says in the report, the city installed or the contractor installa- installed. First of all, we don't know who installed, so, Mr. Mayor, that's your job, you should know. So, can, will you tell us who installed it? It says it right here in the report on Panther Hill water distribution, oh, you don't know, right? Okay, so, so, so you don't know. Again, if I was mayor, then I would know.
You don't know anything, I don't know why you're acting like this.
I'm saying, as far as, in the report, it says this, who is, who installed it, thank you. It says who installed it, and so we're simply not trying to place bane, we're just trying to get the, the answers, so we can move forward. Whether, he says it's two hundred to five hundred dollars, but the question is, if all the developments saying that they need this, then, then we need to discover if it's, who's gonna pay for it and how do we move forward? Who did the water connection? That's my point, we don't know. And it's near the water connection in the city eas- city easement, meaning city often responsibility. City easement, when Mr. Boswick shared it with us, remember this report is dated November twenty-second, okay? Mr. Boswick was here a couple of weeks ago. It wasn't clear until he and I talked about it, and you clarified it again for the benefit of all of us, this is on the city easement. City has to make the water sewer connection by city ordinance. So, with this project being what it was and so much going on, me and Mr. Boswick, who was around back then, we weren't clear who may have done this, because what we know the city does, and we didn't know what the developer did, because it was in the city easement. So, please, whether we wind up billing them or not, if it's a TCEQ violation, which can run ten thousand dollars a day, please, get it done, and get the invoice to me. And if we can figure it out, and if it's theirs, we'll bill them. But right now, it needs to be done, and that's all that concerns me now, okay? Thank you, please, continue, anything else for us?
That's all I had, any questions?
Please, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So. Well, what, what USW found, we're gonna get corrected as soon as tomorrow unless y'all need, you know, a piece of equipment that you have to get elsewhere or something, so, we'll take care of that, and then get with me, and I'll deal with whoever I need to.
Okay.
Um, item six, hemp city ordinance?
We have, we have action.
Can we, uh, this was action, well, item twelve?
Item twelve.
It says discuss, it doesn't say take action.
No, no, not to take that.
To, uh, to, 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 there were some recommendations given, right? Just like the ones you were just so heptily to receive. So, we wanna ask, there's some that's gonna, can be done by you, and some that are gonna require a letter, whether that's through you or through the attorney. We wanna get clarity on what is our plan of action on these, on, on those two developments of reference, well, to two developments, but one specifically in reference to Panther Hill and the twelve buildings that needed the engineering letters and RMPs that you, that you were copied on a, a year ago. Are we gonna get, so, what's the timeframe on this letter? We wanna make sure we give you enough time to send out the letter, for, asking them for a correct engineering letter, a correct RMP letter on those twelve buildings, and then asking them for the information on every building for framing they should have, we should have a file copy. When is the, when are you going to do that?
Well, I'll get with Ms. Rogers as soon as time permits, based on the short week and coming up on the holidays. I would say sometime after, maybe the week after Thanksgiving, uh, assuming she's not off and that sort of thing. But to get her listing and double check what's needed, get them to send engineer letters, just like we did with Flo Kim and others who've done things and never got one inspection, and, uh, it was never an issue. But, uh, so those type of things.
So, we'll have that before the next meeting?
Not necessarily.
No, no, the letters, just the letters going out?
I don't know Ms. Rogers' schedule, so I don't know what's needed, so, no, I'm not gonna commit to that again. It's a short week now, and she may be on vacation, like a lot of people are this week, she may be on vacation next week. But I would say, I don't know, thirty, thirty days is at least a reasonable time, of course. Well, no. But, yeah, again, uh, what, one, one of the things we have to look at is not just Ms. Rogers' schedule, but our schedule here. Uh, Ms. Bynum will tell you, we're busy, we're dealing with, whenever there's an issue, we have to stop, drop everything we're doing and address it. So, to sit here and say, I'm gonna get on this issue when there are other things on the calendar already, and I don't know, some, also depending on someone else's schedule, I can't tell you it's gonna be ready in two weeks for a holiday. That's not necessarily reasonable, but it'll, it'll get done. Now, now, let me ask you this, uh, since council voted for you to handle it, why don't you handle it?
It's done.
Okay, good, all right, next item, we're back to item six. Uh, hemp city ordinance, this was a meeting, um, Texas passed some hemp laws and that sort of thing, and this is just to let council know, uh, and particularly, uh, our city attorney, Ms. Griffin, that we wanna take a look at, so we can take a position one way or another, but to start the dialogue. Um, since this is a state law and, you know, again, and getting ahead of, before someone wants to come here and do something, how is that supposed to work, under what conditions? Are other cities allowing it, are other cities allowing it? Things of that nature, just so, again, just to start the dialogue more than anything else, because there are meetings taking place within the city limits regarding this, so. I just wanted to bring it to council and the public's attention, and to have you, uh, educate us on what's going on with it, because it's.
Are, are you talking about the CBD being turned into a food product?
Yes.
Agricultural, okay.
You have information, Mr. Mayor, or is this?
Nope, it's just starting the dialogue, so that we can get the information on what it is, how it works, and, uh, the agriculture department on campus is, is looking at it, and there may be some things that overflow into the city, which is within the city limits, again, just to put it in front. Item seven, Councilwoman Williams Town Hall Meeting.
Um, thanks, ma'am. I wanna thank everyone that came up to the first town hall meeting over at Pastor Singleton's church. The next town hall meeting will be on December thirteenth, out in the Wise Chapel area at Wise Chapel Baptist Church at five P.M. Um, it was a great dialogue between us and the citizens, we, um, really got some great input from citizens. Um, Ms., Dr. Vida Brown is, is helping me, and so we're gonna get all those things written up, and it's just an opportunity for us to hear about what you want and what you want in the city of Prairie View, what you would like to see in the city of Prairie View, what are your concerns? Um, what is it you like, you don't like, is to just really get some input. And we want everybody to participate, and we're gonna have a town hall in different areas of the city of Prairie View every month. So, again, the next one will be on December the thirteenth, out in the Wise Chapel area, uh, which is behind the university at Wise Chapel Baptist Church. Thank you.
Uh, do you have all the dates set up for every location already?
No, 'cause I have to get back with the minister from this church, 'cause he has a return in my follow-up.
Item eight, Community Engagement Board application, uh, Council Wallace.
Yes, I, uh, a couple of months ago, I gave a presentation about the Community Engagement Board, which is basically initiative that way we can find different ways to engage the city, uh, engage the citizens to see what we need to do to further be more efficient, but also better the city. So, they're open right now, if you go to the front, uh, you should be able to get an application. The way it's set up, uh, is that there are seven different parts of the city that are split up based upon, uh, FM, ten ninety-eight, and, uh, business two ninety, old business two ninety. So, we wanna represent each section of the city, that way they can speak on behalf of the concerns of those citizens, 'cause, uh, every, every different section may have different concerns, so we wanna make sure it would be as inclusive as possible. I'll also make sure, um, that the presentation I gave, I'm gonna give it to the front desk, that way, uh, if you wanna look more into what is the Community Engagement Board, what does that entail? Are you be able to go through that presentation, so you can get any, uh, any type of information you need? And once again, my, my business card, it's at the front as well, so if you wanted to call me, or, or, uh, send an email, or with any other council members, uh, please do so.
Thank you, sir. Uh, item nine, the Panther Party and Abundance of Hands Community Service Ministry Organizations wanting to do community service in the city, Council Wallace.
Yeah, so the Panther Party and Abundance of Hands Community Service Ministry are two organizations that are dedicated to, uh, community service uh, within the city and help in any way possible. So, every week, uh, they'll be in different parts of the community, uh, doing door-to-door, uh, they pass out pamphlets with, with, uh, organizers' names and emails. So, in the past couple of months, I mean, they've done a good amount of work. They've not helped organize people's garages, uh, they painted railing, uh, they did work at United Methodist Church. So, they're just students that wanna help bridge that gap and really put in service and try to make the time that they have in Prairie View as efficient as possible. Uh, so I make sure that they put some of the applications up in the front desk as well. So, if there's anything that you may need, uh, please do not hesitate to call them, because they are willing and yearning to make sure that they make a difference within that ci- within the city.
Great, thank you, sir. Uh, next, we've got, uh, Employee First Responder Appreciation Day, uh, proclamation. I think, uh, I see our fire chief in the back, Chief, if you would come forward, Councilman Jones and Wallace. We've got a proclamation, Ms. Bynum.
Ms. Bynum, you gotta take a photo with us too, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, we want all employees, uh, so, employee, uh, Employee First Responder Appreciation Day. It's something, because, you know, we're in Thanksgiving season, uh, so the proclamation is so that every Monday of Thanksgiving, we would give thanks to those that do work in the city that may go unrecognized, you know, that their efforts don't go unnoticed, and that we just appreciate them, and the city.
I'm not an employee.
Well, you know, pull it up.
I, I am a contractor, thank you. Ms. Bynum, you are an employee.
If you don't wanna take a picture with us, you could just say that. I was acting on your way home, no, okay. Um, Ms. Bynum, please, join us. Uh, this is a proclamation of recognition of employees and first responders, and I certainly wanna thank Councilman Wallace and Jones, 'cause they took the lead on this and set it up on a regular basis. I think it's something that's well overdue with what our, uh, first responders do. Whereas individuals, both career and volunteer, including public safety dispatchers, law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, search and rescue, and other organizations in the public sec- safety sector, come together as first responders to aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas first responders risk their own safety and personal property and the execution of their duties to protect the public every day, and they are the first line of defense for the public against all threats, both domestic and foreign, and whereas first responders are a vital part of our communities, standing ready twenty-four hours a day to deal with emergencies and volunteering in our schools and community organizations. And whereas acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens or first responders to provide them with the needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations they face every day. And whereas other employees of the city, such as the city secretary, city treasurer, administrative staff, and public works employees go unrecognized for their diligent efforts and kindly demeanor to citizens on a daily basis, both providing patience and responsiveness to the day needs of the citizenry. Now, therefore, I, David Allen, Mayor of the city of Prairie View, Texas, hereby proclaim the Monday of the week of Thanksgiving in each year to be employees and first responders' appreciation day in the city of Prairie View, Texas, proclaim this twenty-fifth day of November two thousand nineteen, set before my hand. And having been out there with, uh, Chief Jackson at all hours of the night when they were risking their lives and trying to save people from drowning, and certainly the fire situation some of you all have been in, um, I couldn't get that Monaville fire, it was growing, I mean, I just saved the car. But, uh, but no, seriously, we wanna thank you, and we wanna really let all of.
But, but no, seriously, we want to thank you, and we want to really let all of your folks know. We appreciate what you all do in responding to these things.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
You might as well take it as a representative of the group.
Item 11. Arcs Advantage renovation project. Ms. Meyer? Well, I think just letting them know what you are looking at, what folks are doing, would be perfect, because we appreciate what you're doing.
You're good evening.
Mayor and council, I appreciate you having come here, I appreciate your service. I know this is a difficult, and I appreciate the citizens for all your participation and your concern about the development. My name is Robbie Meyer, I'm with Arcs Advantage, I, I represent the Feasor Development Group. They are proposing a rehabilitation to Pine Meadows and Shady Oaks Apartments. We are applying to the Texas Department of Housing for housing tax codes. That is a federal grant program, and that is what we are here tonight. There are two resolutions, I believe there are items 20 and 21. They are requesting support resolutions from the council for our application for that grant. And that is going to supply us with, in layman's terms, the equity or investment in its private dollars to do that renovation to the, to the apartment. The development to Shady Oaks will be about a million dollars, just over a million dollars, and to Pine Meadows, about just over $2 million. For that resolution, I believe in, in your packet, you do have a basic description of what we're going to do, and that is a major, this will do a major renovation. Flooring, cabinetry, replacements of bath fixtures, siding, paint. Will roofs that need to be replaced, that will replace, headac units. They'll be brought up to 504 accessibility standards. And so, it will be a major renovation, since this is not mop and glue, that some developers will come in. And with all the discussion that has gone on with the previous development that was on here agenda, not only will you be inspecting this department, this development, or both of these developments, but the state will also be inspecting it as we go through the stages of rehabilitation, but also our investors. So, whether you get out there and look at it or not, our investors will, so. If something goes wrong in the city, our investors aren't going to let us sign off and let us close and get sealed. So, just to say that everybody else at the ease, hopefully, they won't be standing up here having problems with me. But if you do, you, you can, you can-